On the go live for me. Stand by, Mike.
Okay, let me know when you want me to start.
Go for it.
Welcome to the special school committee meeting. For August twenty fourth, two thousand twenty one. As a preliminary matter, this is Mike, Judge Chairman of the Barnstable School Committee. I am going to confirm that all school committee members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Please remember to unmute yourself to indicate your attendance and then re mute. So we don't have background noise. Kathy Bent?
Yeah.
Stephanie Ellis?
Yeah.
Barbara Dunn?
Yeah.
Joe Nicestrom?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Superintendent Mayo Brown?
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Harmon?
Here.
Gareth Markwell?
Present.
And Jane Moynihan?
Present.
This is an open meeting of the Barnstable School Committee being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive orders allowing open meetings to continue remotely. For this meeting, the school committee is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town and district websites. This meeting is being livestreamed in real time on YouTube and being televised on local channel ninety nine. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Turning to the meeting ground rules. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their comments. The chair will go through the comment committee members, inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold off speaking until your name is called. Please remember to unmute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yells the flow to you and state your name before speaking. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Moving on to one point one, district vision and core values. District vision. The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core values. In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment. We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration. We work together while keeping students' needs at the center of all decision making. Community. We build strong respectful partnerships that support student success. Now move on to one point two, statement by Chair, video or audio recording of meeting. I remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on channel ninety nine. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as the chair, and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. We will now move on to item two point one, announcement of consultant for superintendent search. This is an informational item. Cape Cod Collaborative was the lowest eligible respondent. Paul Hilton from Cape Cod Collaboratives is here tonight. Is Glenn here too, and no, just you, Paul?
I am the only person able to be here tonight.
Okay.
I had another commitment this afternoon.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so. Other than that, I will turn it over to you, Paul.
All right, thank you. Members of the school committee, on behalf of the Cape Cod Collaborative, it's a pleasure to be here. For those not familiar with the Cape Cod Collaborative, Cape Cod Collaborative is an agency of the school districts on the Cape and Islands. We've conducted searches regularly for superintendents throughout the region and beyond. And more recently, we've done the last two superintendent searches in Barnstable in two thousand and fifteen. It was a hybrid search with the Mass Association of School Committees. The unique partnership allowed us to utilize the local resources and commitment of the Cape Cod Collaborative and the statewide national resources of the Mass Association School Committees, both that Barnstable secures as a member of the Mass Association School Committees, as well as the paid consulting capacity of the Mass Association School Committees. Our goal is to serve the committee well, serve the community well, and we have a very deep investment in the success of your committee and the search process and look forward to working with you.
Excellent. Thank you, Paul. Do you have any questions? Or are we? To go, I don't, Paul, I just so, oh, go ahead, Barbara.
Not a question, just hi, Paul, just want to say I'm very happy that you'll be working, the collaborative will be working along in this process. I know you've had a lot of experience in that area and in my time serving as representative on the collaborative. I really enjoyed getting to work with you and I'm thrilled you're on board, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing nobody? Okay, Paul, thank you very much.
If I could just ask two things. One is, I think with Ms. Bent and Mr. Nice from, I believe, your search subcommittee, we're going to seek to meet in person with Ms. Bent and Mr. Nice from between now and your next meeting on the first. And it's going to be critical to set compensation and set your search committee as quickly as possible to to allow the advertising to start for the search. So if the school committee can mark that as among the things that need to critically get done soon, would move the process forward quickly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Kathy?
Yeah, so just to follow up on Paul's comment, Joe and I have spoken. We're intending to meet with consultants so that we can establish a timeline and share the information that we have from the last school committee meeting. And then our intention is to bring forth a recommendation to build on the draft. The draft superintendent position, job description at the September one meeting and identify. The plan for September one is to identify stakeholders positions for the committee so that we can announce to the public how they can volunteer if interested in serving. So thanks, we're looking forward to working with Paul and Glenn and Jim.
Thank you very much, members of the school committee and administration. Any other questions, I'd be happy to answer by email in person.
Joe, are you raising your hand or are you just waving? Just waving? Okay. Sounds good. Okay, thank you, Paul. Have a good night. We'll now move on to two point two, public comment. Please limit comments to three minutes per individual. There will be thirty minutes allotted for the public comment period. Public comments must be limited to those items within the school committee's scope of authority. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, or the individual will request an item be placed on a future agenda. The chair will also allow public comment at his or her discretion during a meeting. Please, people who wish to participate in public comment may connect via the Zoom link included in the agenda. If no comments are received after a period of three minutes, I will close public comment and proceed to the next agenda item. So Jim, if you want to let in. Yeah, I will now open public comment.
Okay, here's. Welcome, Mr. Gonzalez. You have three minutes for a public comment.
Right, sir, can you just state your name? When your audio, one sec, your audio is not in yet. One minute.
Mr. Gonzalez, can you hear us?
It says on our screen that his audio is connecting.
Okay. Let's. Let's try somebody else then temporarily.
You can just keep him in here if you want, Jim, just to see if maybe they'll connect.
All right, next that came in was. Hello, Carrie Douglas, please go ahead with your public comment.
Hi, Carrie, how are you?
Hi, my name is Carrie Douglas. I am a Barnstable resident and I have two kids in the Barnstable school systems. I just wanted to let you guys know that I do support the mask mandate for students K through twelve. I would hope that the committee does not go against your own Dr. Redmond's consultant of recommending masks for all children, as well as now recently, the Department of Education and secondary education. Likely, the commissioner going to be saying that we're going to have a mask mandate until October first. Also, the Mass Department of Public Health. And also, in general, I think the goal has always been for the committee and the district to be in person, having synchronous learning for all. And I think it's difficult to do that when we have surges like we have now and we have exposures and kids are forced to go remote for extended periods of time. And especially at the elementary level, asynchronous learning is not, you know, something that works necessarily for a school based all day type of learning. And I think if the goal is in person, it needs to be in person with masks to prevent these exposures which cause remote to happen. So I would hope that you would continue to support in-person students with masking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good night.
You as well.
Jim, on my screen, it still says that his audio is still trying to connect.
Okay, I'll add another person then, see what happens.
Is.
I'm going to put him back in the waiting room just for a second.
Yeah, see if it works out there, maybe have him, if you can get a hold of him, maybe have him just maybe try coming back in again, I'm not sure, just. I think when he came in before, when you had him in before, I don't think his audio ever loaded for the entire time he was in here.
I will look into it.
Thank you.
Here comes next. Crystal Marcantonio, it's your turn for public comment.
Good evening, if you could just do me a favor, just state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Crystal Marcantonio. I live in Centerville and I actually have a daughter who will be in the Barnstable school system coming this next year.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So I for the mask mandate, I think if we actually look at the data. Can you not hear me?
No, I can hear you, I can hear you fine. Do you have your TV on by any chance?
No, I have your other window open.
Okay. It just, first, there was a little bit of backfeed, but go ahead, I'll wait a minute, let me just restart your time. Go ahead, you're all set.
My name is Crystal Marcantonio, I live in Centerville. My daughter will be attending Barnstable High School next year. She's been in private school previously. I had to say, I do not agree with the mask mandate. I think it should be personal choice if you look at the actual data and how it spreads and the numbers that are currently being shown were at the lowest that it has been. And I like, I know the media likes to use the buzzword surge, but if you actually look at the numbers, it's lower than it has ever been. And the death rates are lower than ever and kids getting the virus, even with the new Delta virus, is lower than ever. And I have to agree with some of the things that were said today at the Mass Department of Education meeting, although they did enact the mandate till October first, there were some great points made about all the holes in the plan and that there is no off ramp, there's no plan going forward of how long it'll continue. Two weeks to flatten the curve to a year to however long it's going to continue. There's not a solid plan, there's not a solid answer, and it can't be something that goes on forever. We have to be optimistic that things are going to get back to normal and we have to send our kids a message that things are going to get better. And although they are going to be in person, which my daughter was all of last year, which it's fantastic Barnstable can be in person all year, it still needs to send the message that things are better and that things are going to get better and that they don't have to wear a mask to interact with their friends. Mental illness among teens is at the highest it's been in twenty years because of everything that's gone on in the past year. Letting them get back to the normal is the best thing we can do for them. So that's it, that's my time.
Thank you very much and have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Hi, Mike, I'm adding Ruta Disma Dimsa.
Okay. Just got to wait for her audio to come up.
Looks like we're waiting on that. There we go. Hello, Ruta.
Good evening. You're muted. I don't know if you're trying to talk, but you're muted. There you go. Good evening.
Can you hear me? Good evening.
Yeah, good evening, welcome.
Thank you.
Can you just actually just give me a name for the record?
Sure, my name is Ruta Dumsa and I'm living in Katowice, I'm a Barnstable resident. And I just.
So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, just so you're all set. Yeah, you're all set, you can go have your three minutes.
So I just wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have to say that I'm a little disappointed this meeting is held virtually and not in person because you're kind of making this as difficult as possible for people in public to call in and comment as other towns on Cape and off Cape are holding these meetings in person. I actually had a speech written on the dangers of masking the kids with supporting data. But after this morning's vote to allow Commissioner Riley to mandate masks until October first, this plan has changed. I have to admit, the vote devastated me. I have to echo Crystal that there's no data to support this, there's so many loopholes with this mandate. And I'm just honestly disgusted by the political theater Board of Education exhibited without any actual science to support children in masks. All summer, kids went to restaurants, malls, stores, fairs, camps, Red Sox games, Bruins games with tens of thousands of spectators and no masks. But when they're expected to learn for six hours a day, they have to be covered. And sometimes it's even longer because they take a bus to and from school. So instead of a speech, I had written multiple questions when it comes to this mandate. I don't expect you to answer them today, but I need to ask them and maybe you can relay them to the, back to Desi and Board of Education. So what is the end goal with this mandate? What happens if vaccination rate of eighty percent is not reached by due date? Is it another two weeks of flattening the curve? We know that kids under the age of twelve cannot receive vaccines. So what does that exactly mean for elementary age kids? And one of my kids is in elementary school. Does that mean they will be masked forever? What happens to a child who refuses to wear a mask? Are they going to be reprimanded? Are they going to be bullied by other students, teachers, nurse, or other staff members of the school? Are there any exemptions parents can submit? I know there are a lot of questions that parents have and I still have more, and I will make sure to submit them all in writing to school committee members. As I do understand, the decision has been made by Desi and school districts have to follow. But you are, you're made aware that parents are rising, we are not going to comply going forward after October first, and we will not go away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, Mike. This is, it looks like Rachel Clow, Rachel Clow?
Clough, yep. Waiting for her audio to, yep. Rachel. Rachel, are you there? You're muted.
Hi, I'm sorry.
That's okay, you're good, welcome, welcome. Can you just give me a name for the record?
Rachel Clough.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought somebody was still speaking, so.
No, it's okay, you're good, you're all set. Welcome, you can stay here three minutes whenever you would like.
Okay, thank you. My name is Rachel Clough, I'm a parent of two children in the Barnstable Public School System. I have worked in the emergency medical field for over eighteen years alongside obtaining extensive education in nutrition, fitness, and wellness for over fifteen years. While my opinions do not in any way reflect the opinions or represent my employer in any way, my experience speaks to my level of understanding in the current climate. Kids are resilient. It has become a popular phrase recently. Has it not? It also happens to be one of the most false lines to come out of the pandemic. If kids are so resilient, why do we have a generation of adults still talking about childhood trauma? Kids are not immune to trauma, they are too vulnerable. Their mental health is just easier to ignore. Why do we say this phrase over and over and for who? You and I both know we say it for ourselves. We say it to let ourselves off the hook and create distance from responsibility. I will not be presenting data and studies to support my viewpoint and opposition of mandatory masks for children in school, but rather highlight truths many of us know deep down when we get quiet and seek out our internal guidance overplacing all of our bets on external resources. Do we really need a study to tell us that masks severely affect a child's ability to learn, grow, and process information? Do we need a study to remind us that sound alone is only a fraction of the listening process? That facial expressions, micro expressions, and emotion convey a large degree of what someone is actually telling us? Do we need someone else to confirm that these masks invite a constant state of fear? That fear creates a stress response physiologically and what is commonly referred to as fight or flight. That while stress is a natural and healthy response to a threat, chronic stress is extremely toxic and corrosive. That chronic stress depresses our immune systems and significantly inhibits the parts of our brains that are responsible for processing information, memory, and learning. It is no coincidence that fidget toys have become so popular during the past year as many children try to manage and burn off the stress response induced nervous energy that would normally be purged through physical response while they remain seated at their desks. Do we need a study to remind us that every child is different? While one child may tolerate a mess just fine, another child may find it extremely stressful. This further emphasizes the parent is the one who knows what is best for their child's need, overall health and safety. That power to make those decisions should start and end with the parent. The very real and present harms to a child's early development clearly outweigh the benefits of masks, which have yet to have even be clearly established among children. There are no.
You have twenty seconds left, just to let you know.
Okay. These. These children depend on us to make conscious decisions that have their best interests at heart, not decisions that leave us feeling like we need to say things like kids are resilient at the end. I am in opposition of these masks going forward in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Mike, we have three more total. This is Jeanette Barnes. Looks like her audio is connecting.
Welcome, Jeanette. You're muted. Whoop, there you are. Sorry, you moved on my screen. Welcome. Thank you, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Jeanette, can you just give your name for the record?
Yes, hi, it's Jeanette Barnes with WCAI. I actually just wanted to kind of.
We have three more total. This is Jeanette Barnes.
Yeah, hi, I'm just trying to let you know that I am recording.
Welcome, Jeanette. You're muted. Okay. Sorry. Do we need to do anything with that, Jane? Very much. Have a good night.
I'm actually just recording the audio, not video.
Jeanette, can you just keep for the record?
Yes, it's Jeanette Barnes, hi, it's Jeanette Barnes with WCAI. I actually just wanted to.
You just mute just for a sec, Jane, is there any? Do we need to do anything?
We should have known at the beginning, how long has she been recording?
Jeanette, can you answer that?
I'm actually just recording the audio, not video. Yes, it's Jeanette Barnes, hi, it's Jeanette Barnes.
You hear her question, Jeanette? You just, you just for a second, Jane.
Jeanette, you have to stop having two devices playing at the same time.
Yeah, she's on considerable delay.
Jeanette, so the question from our attorney was, how long have you been recording?
Hi, are you there, can you hear me now?
Yeah, what it was is you were getting, all we could hear was you're playing our audio. That's okay, the attorney asked how long had you been recording for?
I was trying to get in to let you know at the beginning, but I couldn't. But I'm recording the audio only, but I was recording from the beginning.
Okay, Jane, is that okay?
You were supposed to give permission at the beginning, so I would say no. And the people that have spoken were not notified that they were being reported.
It's going to be on YouTube though, right? So people could.
This will be on B two B TV, right, guys?
It's already on channel ninety nine.
Yeah, but it'll be like streamable within, by tomorrow.
Yes, that's correct, it's streaming right now and it'll be available in perpetuity after the meeting is over.
Probably get a better recording on that anyway.
Are you okay with it, Joan, or would you? Oh, you muted yourself.
I don't think the procedure was followed and I think the recording should be stopped.
That's our attorney. Jeanette, I don't know if you're watching, but that's our attorney stating that.
Okay. So can I start recording now then? If, you know, people are being informed now from this, you know, this part forward?
One sec, Kathy, go ahead, Jane, go ahead.
Matt, I'm sorry, Mike, that's, I would say at this point, that's up to you. Again, it's being recorded and streamed, so.
I mean, radio stations routinely capture audio from meetings that are posted online or that are run on Zoom as part of their reporting of what happened at the meeting. I mean.
Again, the procedure that we have is that it's brought to the attention of the chair at the start of the meeting.
Right, I understand.
Okay, so.
Okay, so just let me know if it's okay to do it going forward so that I can have the audio for tomorrow morning's newscast and otherwise I will be, you know, sort of at the whim of whenever it goes online.
I'm okay with it, Mike, if you're wondering.
Mike, that's up, that's up to you.
Yeah, so, yeah, 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 Jeanette, I have no problems with your recording from now forward. Because you've notified me, so you've, I mean, you've, I'm not a legal ease, but you know what, you've, you've, even, as it says in the thing, you're just supposed to notify me and you did. So at this point, I have no problems with you recording from this point forward.
Okay.
Mike, can I jump in for a second?
Yes, yeah, go ahead, Jim.
We just can't hear both things at the same time because it creates a feedback loop. There's, there's delay going on with her recording if we can, because what she's recording is coming through her microphone and so we hear two things twice.
Only happening when I was talking though, I mean, that wasn't happening earlier.
No, what it was, you were watching, yeah, what it was, you were playing it while the same time that you and I were trying to talk. I know, yeah, you're right, so it's not doing it anymore. Do you have anything to say for three minutes or are you?
No, I'm sorry, I was.
You were just, that's okay, so you were just notifying me that you were recording.
Yep.
Okay.
I tried to get in at the beginning, but I couldn't.
Okay. Okay, so you can record as of now and thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Yep, good night.
Jim, do we have anybody else?
Yeah. We have April's iPhone.
Welcome, April. Can you just say your name for the record? Hello? April? April, I can't hear you.
It looks like her audio is not connected, Mike.
Okay.
Standby.
Yep.
I'm going to try Roland Gonzalez again.
Okay. Good evening, Roland. Good evening, Roland. Roland, can you hear me?
Looks like we have the same issue as before, Mike.
This isn't saying that it's trying to connect like it usually does.
Okay. Standby. I've put in somebody named Chris with a K.
Yep, it says it's connecting the audio.
I'm not sure what to do about that. Seems to be an issue on their end. Standby, Mike.
Yep.
Thank you. Mike, do you have a suggestion here? I've got three people in the waiting room that can't connect their audio. Should we try one more time with each one of them or?
Um, yeah, I think maybe have them try one more time.
Okay, so here comes Roland Gonzalez.
Roland, can you hear me? Oh, wait a minute, his audio is trying to connect now. Oh, there you are, Roland. Oh, you're muted. Can you unmute?
He's muted.
Yeah, it took a little bit, we got you. Can you just give me a name?
Yeah, my name is Roland. Yeah, Roland Gonzalez, uh, Centerville.
Okay, excellent, welcome. Took a little bit to get you in, but we got you in. Um, so we're gonna give you three minutes, so whenever you're ready, you can start.
Okay, great, I appreciate it. Um, yeah, I know, another concern apparent here. Um, and definitely not for the mask mandate or any mandate for that matter. Um, I mean, if you want to just talk about facts and data, you know, there, there's more science and data and studies that are coming out, um, you know, against the, the mask much more than, than any, um, studies for the mask, so just as far as necessity, there's nothing that really warrants the mask. Um, and I, I know there's a lot of detrimental issues so far, um, not only in my own family, but other friends who have children as well who've been affected, you know, just my children alone. I know my youngest has trouble breathing, she's had headaches every single day with the mask. Um, you know, the other two, sometimes they have issues, not as much. It, it, you know, it just, there's so much against the mask that, that, the, the negatives outweigh the, um, the, any, any sort of positives and there's really not any positives. I mean, that, if you really search around, um, and look and dig around for the data, it, there's so many more negatives um, against the mask wearing than any beneficial properties that we can really argue for, so, um, and, and not to mention this, you know, the implications of this beyond now, um, it just seems so topsy-turvy. We've never done this before for any others. It goes against any science that we've, you know, used in the past for viruses. Um, you know, children are definitely the, the least at risk and uh, at, at transmitting as well, so I don't know, I just, I really hope that you guys listen to the people. There's a lot of people who probably aren't on here that, um, maybe didn't get the word. This is, this group is, I only heard about it just recently, so, um, I just hope that you, you know, you'll listen to the, the residents here. Um, and be reasonable with this thing and, you know, go against this mandate idea. Um, and appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
Okay, one more Mi- Mike to try to
Okay. April's iPhone.
I'm gonna
I, April, can you unmute? Oh, there we go. You got her, Jim. Thank you. Excellent job, Jim. April, welcome. Can you just give me your name for the record?
Sure, my name is April Croker.
Okay, April, welcome. Welcome to the school committee meeting. Um, you get three minutes for public comments, so whenever you're ready to start, you may start.
Thank you. Please tell us, what scientific evidence do you have that the thousands of parents who have contacted both you and Desi don't have? What do you have to prove the evidence that we provided is wrong? The state website shows your credentials and frankly, we are not impressed. You are not more qualified to make decisions for children that belong to us than we are, children that you don't know. We know the actual boxes that masks come in clearly say that they cannot prevent spread. Understand this. Masks do not work against COVID or the variant. Stop using them as a tool to get what you want done politically. There is so much evidence which has been provided to you and Desi that masks harm both physically and mentally, yet you choose to ignore that evidence and make mandates that literally will harm our children. There is no question. All in your goal to try to make people as uncomfortable as possible so they will vaccinate, so they can remove those masks, we see through, through you. Will you be personally responsible for the rashes, bacteria, infection, respiratory, and mental illness that we know without a doubt that masks have caused and can cause? All of your decisions have been made based on a lie, the lie that masks work. Even your beloved Anthony, Anthony Fossey has said many times that they don't work. It's time for you to be honest and make the moral decision. Give parents the choice.
Yeah, you're done? Is that it? Hello? Thank you, have a good night. Anybody else, Jim?
Yeah, I have one more that joined in.
Okay.
Just says iPhone. Standby. Are you seeing that show up at all, Mike?
Uh, it just says iPhone. Oh, it's connected. iPhone, can you please unmute?
Good evening.
Hi, can, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you just give me your name for the record?
Uh, my name is Catherine Mullen.
Okay, Catherine, welcome. So you're gonna have three minutes in public comment to make your statement, okay?
Hi, thank you so much. So I just want to start by saying that I am a parent. I have students going into seventh grade, sixth grade, and fourth grade in Barnstable. Um, I'm also a, a primary care nurse here on the Cape for almost a decade. I also want to comment that I'm very disappointed that this meeting is not held in person. That this meeting has been held virtually because a lot of people have been cut off. You can't hear and, um, I think we definitely could have made this in person safely considering we're going back to school in person. Kids are right now at the movies. We just came back from Canterbury Lake. My husband and I went to a concert. All of these things are being done unmasked. The kids are at the mall. And while the spread is continuing, it is nothing near compared to what we were at last year. There is no reason why our students in K through twelve need to be masked while in school. Um, the school system really needs to think about this hard and think about how many families will leave Barnstable schools. My husband and I pulled out our three children last year and homeschooled them. And we are prepared to do that again and for the continuing years if Barnstable continues to do this. This is not right. And they need to think about how many other families are also prepared to leave Barnstable School. That is going to be a huge financial disruption in the Barnstable School System. And it is because of these mask mandates and it is because of the pressure that students are also going to feel being forced getting vaccinations. My oldest student is in seventh grade. He's almost thirteen years old. He is eligible for the vaccine. We will not be vaccinating him and he is in agreement to that. But when I think about him going to school and at some point kids who have been vaccinated do not have to wear masks and he will have to continue to wear masks, that is not right to continue to segregate the children and putting this, them in the middle of this political battle. As stated by others before, masks do, are not effective. They are not working. They will not work in the school system. COVID and its variants will continue to spread with or without masks.
You have twenty seconds left.
Well, I think I have expressed my frustration. I hope it is taken into consideration on how detrimental this will be to the families and to the students in Barnstable. Thank you.
Thank you and have a good night.
You too.
Jim, is there anybody else?
I, I have one more that just joined recently.
In fact, I just need to ask my fellow school committee members. So we have reached the half hour mark of our public comment. Do we want to let in one more person or do we want to, go ahead, Stephanie?
That one person came in right at that thirty minute mark. I think we absolutely should let that one person have their
I agree. I just want to make sure that everybody's okay with that. And with the, with the problems we had in the middle, I think we could probably let them in. Go ahead, Kathy. You're muted.
I agree. I think we should let the people speak because we did have some technical issues.
Okay, uh, yeah, Jim.
Okay. Standby. Dean Douglas.
Dean. Hi.
Hi, um, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you. Uh, can you just give your name just for the record?
Uh, my name is Dean Douglas. I have two kids in Barnstable Public Schools. Um, one is at BUES and one is at West Villages and I think I've been listening to this. And I won't need the full three minutes, but, um, I think people are missing the point. The point of wearing a mask is not so that we can have a good time. It's to be preventative so that we don't either contract COVID ourselves or transmit it to others ourselves. And to also ensure that we can keep the school year in person and not remote as we had to do last year. So this is a preventative thing. And I know I've heard, you know, all kinds of stats and people quoting whatever made up, um, studies they've heard. The issue here is to be preventative. It's a prophylactic measure that we all need to participate in, whether or not you agree with it or not, it's about public health. And that's just what I wanted to communicate and I think that's what I'd ask you to sort of keep in mind is that if we're able to keep the mask mandate in place, we are not just protecting the individual students, we're protecting their families, whether or not they want to be protected or not. And we also protecting the school year so that we can actually be in person. Where a lot of students actually learn better in person as opposed to over Zoom or some other telephonic measures. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Jim, I assume that's it?
That's it, Mike. Thanks for your patience.
Oh, excellent job. Thank you, Jim. Um, I am not gonna do the three minutes because we have three minutes of, of stoppage time because we're over our thirty minutes and we allow people to continue. Um, having done that, I will now close public comment. And we will now move on to two point three. Uh, suspend Paul's, suspend policy on policy adoption, BGB. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to move pursuant to policy BGF suspension of policies to suspend the application policy BGB policy adoption to agenda item two point four to the extent that policy BGB requires the committee to engage in multiple readings of a policy prior to the adoption of new policies and or proposed amendments to existing policies.
The motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Another motion is seconded. Is there any discussions? Seeing none, be a roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Libra?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chair's yes passes unanimously. Moving on to two point four, update policies on face, face coverings. EBCFA. I'll let me turn it over to you, Meg.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, everyone. Uh, this morning, uh, the Board, the State Board of Education met and granted the authority to Commissioner Riley to implement a mask mandate for all students, all staff in all public schools until at least October first. So in light of the Board of Education's, uh, vote this morning, we have prepared for the committee and I'm gonna share my screen so the public can see it as well. A draft, um, some revisions to your current face covering policy. So just by way of a public expla- explanation, um, in twenty twenty, the Barnstable School Committee approved a face covering policy that has
Meg, sorry to interrupt you. We can't see it. I don't know if you Oh, sorry, sorry.
So the, just getting a little background, so the, um, school committee approved a face covering policy back in twenty twenty. That's been, um, in place um, during this time. So what I'm about to show are slight revisions, um, to that current policy. Give me one second and I'll share my screen. Should be able to see it. I'm gonna shrink it just a little. So this is your, this is the Barnstable Public, um, School Committee's current policy on face coverings. What I've done so that you can see is removed by strike through and yellow highlighting the sections that are no longer relevant. And again, this is consistent, um, with the Board of Education's, uh, vote this morning. So what we've removed is, um, on school grounds because masks are not required outside. And physical distancing is no longer revel- relevant. It's not part of any guidance, um, that we're receiving as a school district. So we've removed it in the sec- reference to physical distancing in the second paragraph as well, um, as the bottom here, which is talks about additionally, um, face mask or face coverings will not be required obviously during mass breaks while eating or drinking or while outside. And then we've just added some of the latest, uh, references from the state, um, that's consistent with the current, uh, or these changes. And I also have, uh, Alicia Bryant, who's our Director of Health Services, is here to answer any questions, um, about uh, that the committee may have relative to this policy or any of our current protocols.
Okay. Are there any questions? Joe, did your hand go up?
Um yes, uh well, I have a question for I guess both of you. I'll start with Meg. Um what are the uh questions if a district does not uh does not adopt the policy of all masks?
Uh Joe, I don't have the answer to that question. That wasn't discussed by Desi. Um the commissioner's indicated he's getting guidance out to school districts this week. So um perhaps that um answer will be in the guidance.
Did you have a second question, Joe?
All right, yeah. Um the second question is, uh which is one of my big concerns is uh what a few people have met is that there there seems to be no end game here except for an incentive for people to get um vaccinated. And I don't think that masks should be used as a carrot for to get people vaccinated. If you want teachers and students to get masked, to get vaccinated, then you require teachers and students to get ma- to get vaccinated. You don't say, hey, wear a mask until you get to eighty percent vaccination and hope to increase the vaccination rates. Now, we just got the FDA just approved the vaccination. So um for those that were holding back, I'm hoping that we'll see a surge in vaccinations. And um there's really no excuse now to not get uh to not get a vaccination. But my biggest concern is, and I can ask any uh health expert, um is that, you know, if you look at the categories of risk, when you're in the mild, you know, there's like basically little or no, and then it moves up to moderate. And then it's high and it's severe. Uh we are in the lowest category right now and they use two metrics for that. Which is what I'm really disappointed that Commissioner Riley did not mention the amount of community spread in any community. Which is disappointing because suppose there was not one more case in Cape Cod over the next four weeks. We'd also have to wear masks even though we had no covid. Um this is a chi- this this is changing. And you know, I I'm also against the CDC making recommendations for every single district depending on. We're not in Florida right now where there's seven hundred fifty thousand cases and two hundreds children in the hospital. We have less than twenty thousand active cases that we know about in Massachusetts right now. We're getting about five cases per day here in Barnstable. Um and it's it's, you know, there there's a lot of uh, you know, shock things going on. And and about masks, masks work. I guess you have to define work. Does it make you immune? No. Does it decrease spread? Of course. However, we don't want to and 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 I guess, you know, Commissioner Riley should we we don't want to play this game because eh you know, you don't want to be the boy who cried wolf. You don't want to say, hey, you know, if 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 there's not a risk of transmission, a ha- a a moderate risk of transmission to community. We, you know, then forcing people to wear masks eh I I feel is absurd. Um because when if there is a risk and then we say we gotta keep masks on, then you're less likely to get compliance. And that's what I'm afraid of. Um right now, our positivity are uh percent positivity is like three point nine percent. Our cases per hundred thousand in Barnstable. Now, if you look at the calculations that are made, I talked to the state epidemiologist. I also talked to epidemiologists with the county and the town. Um it looks like it's twelve per hundred thousand, but they're using the year round numbers. So it's really like three per hundred thousand because the population triples here in Barnes. We have fifty thousand year round, but there's a hundred and fifty thousand in the summer. So whenever you're reading those Barnstable County things, they're calculating it out of two hundred thousand people. Well, there's well over five hundred thousand people in Barnstable right now. So basically, the two major metrics, which is cases per one hundred thousand and percent positive out of tests given are both below the threshold that's been pretty much understood as the threshold of you know, of risk, I guess. The first, we're we're still in the first category, which is little, very little risk. So um, you know, I feel like it would be wiser to create um language with thresholds in there so that the the anti-maskers can realize we're actually using numbers in the community and not just listening to what Commissioner Riley says, which could be driven by politics, right? Um I I wish that he had put out, hey, communities with below these two metrics, you're free to make it optional. But once you go above in either of these metrics, then masks are mandated until you reach X amount of percent um vaccinations. So I would suggest, I wrote, I actually, uh could I share a suggestion that I have? Um just so you guys can uh listen to what I'm um been thinking about. Although you're, no one's probably gonna agree with me because, you know, that's just the way things are. But could I share my screen for a second? Um just to show uh what my uh what I'm thinking about here?
Can you share a screen?
That should be possible. I allowed, I allowed everybody to share.
Okay, so let me just go in. Okay, let me hold on. I'm just gonna go in right now. Let me see, share screen.
You gotta jump.
Yeah.
Okay.
So along the lines of this, and if we don't do this now, I feel like, you know, come October first, this is something we should probably be playing with. What thresholds we want based on community spread. Um my suggestion would be to change the language to face covering. Uh a face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn at all times in school buildings unless both of the metrics below are met for the town of Barnstable. Under five percent case positivity rate and less than ten daily cases per hundred thousand people. The superintendent will use the weekly covid update provided by Barnstable's Public Health Department. It's posted every Friday on the town website to inform the district on a weekly basis. So every Friday, no masks again next week. Uh Friday, no masks. See, I'm sorry, we hit six percent or five point five percent case positivity. We're gonna have to wear masks next week until it both of these are below. So if either one of these is surpassed, I think it's just a wiser way to approach. Um of course, masks are required on true transportation until the state guidelines for public transportation change because it is public transportation. Um but for some of the arguments that we've heard tonight and arguments that I've read about, um and um, you know, we 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 are, we we want, it's a balance. We're never gonna be risk free. We have people that never wanna, that don't want to vax or masks, which is weird. And people that want to wear masks even though the world's back and even if this thing I've just forever without an end game. So um I feel like creating some metric that's logical and makes sense would be the wisest move, not just for our district, but just for all districts. And I think that's the one threshold that I've found that seems to be uh unanimous across uh across the country. But anyway, that's my my two cents. I think it's a, I feel like a lot of people who are upset um and for good reason. They feel like they're in the dark. They feel like this is just gonna go on forever and there is no metrics. And I feel the same way. Uh he throws out this eighty percent thing. Uh we're at seventy five. Barnstable is one of the highest vaccinated places in the world. We're like seventy five percent vaccinated. Now, we have a town who actually followed the rules, went out and got vaccinated, did this, did that, did this. And um and I just, I don't know. I guess what's your end game, Riley? That's the whole thing. But you know, I mean, that's what I'm curious about. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Uh Stephanie?
Um first of all, I just want to um publicly recognize the steering committee um that has been working since the pandemic started um and putting in a lot of hours on um trying to make uh safe recommendations for our students and staff. So to those members of the um covid steering committee, I want to just say thank you. Um also, I just, I do want to dovetail a little bit on what Joe had said. Um some of the notes that I had written down um in regards to um the commissioner's recommendation is that I do think that there needs to be some type of algorithm um in place and maybe the steering committee might be the uh mechanism in order to create that, or if we want to do a subcommittee to the school committee, I'm not sure. But create an algorithm that tells us, you know, uh uses data and facts that are reliable. Follow the trends, follow the um follow the data, percentage of vaccinated, uh percentage of um positive uh positivity within the community, maybe a hospitalization um hospitalization rate, um just reliable data. Um determine um determine sort of what path we're going down. Um I don't think it's the worst thing in the world to keep masks on till October first. Let's get everybody in place. And um but I just want to make sure that we are committed to looking at this um on a regular basis, not just on September thirtieth. And may Alicia or Meg, maybe you could answer this question for me. Do we have any current data for our vaccination rate for Barnstable Public Schools?
Thank you. As uh, can you hear me? I unmute. Um as of two weeks ago, and these numbers are actually on the little, a little on the low side. Um I was depending on our electronic health records ability to sync with M I S, the Massachusetts Immunization System. Um and they can't always if the students' names or addresses don't exactly match up. So the best number that I could get as of two weeks ago is that at Barnstable High School, a little over forty percent of the students were vaccinated. I don't have um staff vaccine strength.
Thank you. Yeah, those are my, that's that's my comments um that, you know, I do agree with keeping the masks on. I personally, um I personally agree um and through my level of education, masks do work. Um I work in an operating room. I promise, if any of you are ever having surgery, I will be wearing my mask every single time and without fail. Masks work. Um but I want to make sure that we are um, we're just looking at the data um and making sure that we're looking at it frequently.
Thank you, Stephanie. Barbara?
Um so I think Joe raises some very real and valid points. Um I sit on the steering committee and one of the things I commented on when this conversation first started evolving is that I feel very strongly that this needs to be a fluid situation that um as Joe said and Stephanie said, we have room to make decisions based on our community numbers. I agree with Joe that it is hard for us to be locked in um to the whole state when in fact different communities are in different places. And um so I think that is important. Um I agree with the thought of starting out with the masks till October first, but then I would like to see us have the ability to address that, whether it's with the the steering committee right now meets every two weeks. Maybe every two weeks, the steering committee looks at numbers and reevaluates the situation. And I feel that that gives us the ability to be more in the driver's seat within our own community. Um I do have a question. I'm just curious and I don't know if this is for Alicia or Meg, but do we have numbers of how many students last year had medical reason to um have need not to wear masks due to health issues?
There were not many. Um I can do a quick search on that, but there were not many at all.
Okay. And and the other thing is I just think we do need to keep in mind that um the kids in the schools go home to their families and there's parents, grandparents, um at-risk family members. And um I think it's part of our responsibility, not only to keep our students safe, but think of our families as well, the families of these students. Um and I also think it's critical that we stay in person. And I do believe that the masks help that to happen. So somehow we have to combine all these things. And as we move forward, like I said, I would like to see us have the ability to reevaluate fairly often to to relook at the scenario.
Hey, thank you, Barbara. Kathy, do you have anything?
So I I just want to confirm, Meg, that we have no choice right now through October one. Is that correct?
That is correct. It is a mask mandate um for all students, all schools, all staff in public education. K twelve, yeah.
Okay, um one of the concerns that I had when I read the draft and and I will admit that I read the changes um late this afternoon shortly before the meeting. So um I I would like to see um that the Barnstable County and specifically the town of Barnstable uh Department of Public Health be named and that be our primary source. I agree with Joe that um for flexibility and for um the policy, a a policy to be in place that we don't have to keep running back but will give um the superintendent guidance, clear guidance. I like Joe's idea about including the metrics because that way um it it's cut and dry. Families know what to expect. Um they can predict what's happening when they watch the local data, which is available, readily available. Um I would defer um including, since we will be revisiting this at the beginning of October. I would um be fine with the temporarily approving the changes to the policy. But I definitely would like to see um either added on um after the masks. Uh Department of Public Health, um the Barnstable County, and most importantly, the town of Barnstable Public Health data. Um whether that can just be added to the sentence as part of the list, I'm not sure. It may need to be separated since our local data is the most important.
I didn't unmute myself. Uh Kathy, you're all set. Thank you. Um so I I agree with Joe. I think there has to be some way to measure. It can't be forever. And I believe there has to be some metrics in place and and I would leave it up to the professionals to figure out what and I'm on that steering committee too. And I know we've had a lot of conversations over the last year and a half about metrics and the town metrics and the county metrics. And I know we, uh Alicia provides that chart um every meeting and we look at the metrics for the town and what it's doing and percentages and all of that. And I think I would leave it up to the professionals as far as what those metrics should be. Whether it's the five percent and ten percent like Joe or the the wha- whatever the metrics is, but I think there has to be something. And I kind of like Joe's idea as far as like, it's very easy as far as if we hit, if if we don't, if we're below these metrics, then we don't have masks. And if we go above it, then we have, and that's kind of, the metrics is kind of what we used last year for if we were in person or not in person. So it's kind of the same type of metrics. Um that's kind of how we determined that last year. Um and to be completely honest with you, I wasn't always a hundred percent agreed whether we should be not in person. But you know what? Alicia and Meg were like, Mike, the metrics are the metrics and the science is the science. And you know what? You're right, it is. So I think maybe that i- if the state loosens up as of October first and lets us do that lets local localities do their own thing, I would like to see um us kind of use those same type of metrics we used last year to determine whether we were in school or whether we had to pivot to remote, because that's exactly what we did. I- and whatever the numbers are, I I don't know. That's that's, I don't claim to to know that, but whatever the the health data, the health professionals say. Uh the public health people say those numbers should be, then that's what I think. Uh and this way here, it kind of makes it so it's not forever. It's it's kind of on and off. Meg, you unmuted? You have something to say? Go ahead.
I do. So I just want to um share my screen again. Uh this is a different document. This is the steering committee's recommendations to the school committee that were give, that were submitted prior to the commissioner announcing that he was going to seek authority for a mask mandate. But I think it speaks to um, one second. I have so many things open on my, I think it speaks to um sort of what we're talking about. And that just to sort of foreshadow in October, you know, what we might be looking at. And this is something that um Alicia had put in. And you'll see here, adjustments to the requirements for masking may be reassessed um based on the data, public um data as well, vaccination data, consultation with public health and always consultation with our district physician, um Dr. Katie Redmond. So there are numbers or our metrics that we can be looking at for um to make decisions um whether or not to continue with masks. I also just want to point out um in the commissioner's memo, he did indicate um that it his, um I was trying to find the language here if you can bear with me for one second. Um he did say the mandate will be in place um until at least October first. I'll share this again just so folks can see it. Um the mandate's in place until at least October first. This is the commissioner's memo. At which point I would assess the approach based on the conditions in place. So I don't want our community to think it's all over October first. I think what he is saying is that he's gonna reassess it at October first and make some decisions at that point. So is that, I just want to be sure that's clear.
No, thank you for clariness, clarifying that.
Um and that also this paragraph in his memo, the mask mandate would also include that after October first, if a school demonstrates a vaccination rate of eighty percent or more of all students and staff, then it would be no longer subject to the state mask mandate um for vaccines. So it's all kind, we have all kinds of questions about this, right? If this um, for vaccines. So it's all kind, we have all kinds of questions about this, right? If this were to come into play. Um, but again, I think as we get, I'll stop, um, just wanted to bring those two important points we've talked about as a steering committee, some uh, viable metrics that we can look at. But we also know that that October first date isn't necessarily a firm date, it's a reassessment date.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, uh, thanks, Meg. That's, you know, th- those, those little zones that you guys have, that's one of the reports I read when I went out sniffing around for the stuff. That's, that's, that's the ten cases per hundred thousand, five percent for um, five percent positivity rate that's pretty much used universally. And in that report, we were using county numbers. Um, but out of curiosity, if you go through, you find out that the denominator that they're using is the year round population, the two hundred thousand for the county and the fifty thousand for Barnstable, which we know that during the summer months is triple that. Um, and even, so what happens is of the two metrics there, the most robust of the two would be the percent positive. That one will be the most robust because it's, it's regardless of how many people there are in the air. It's just a percent of tests taken, right? Um, so, you know, i- i- you really have to consider the fudge factor in there when you're, and take the, you know, twelve cases per hundred thousand with a grain of salt. It has to do with what address the person gave when they took the test. So if you're from Austin, Texas, you live in Katoit for three months, you feel sick, you go down to the Hyannis, whatever, you get a test, they say, where do you live? You say Katoit. And that's a Katoit number. You're there, and never mind the population change. So we, we, we're in a really unique situation down here on the Cape um, that this is agreed upon by state epidemiology. For every person that I talked to trying to figure this stuff out in the last week has agreed that um, it's most likely an over reporting from, you know, a bit. Um, more so in Dukes and Nantucket County where the, their population goes up ten to twelfold in the summertime. Um, so when you're looking at those metrics, um, you know, there's a huge safety factor put in with the Cape because we have way more people here than, than a registered devotee are considered year round. So you have to keep that into a, uh, you know, keep that in the back of your mind when you're looking at it. So when I read the recommendations, um, that's when I was like, well, I think we're below those two metrics, and I'm pretty certain we are. But either way, um, you know, I, I think, I, I'm hoping that if Commissioner Riley's listening, he gives guidance based on uh, local spread somewhere with the epidemiologist that he's working with. Um, so that us volunteer, school committee members in little towns all over the place, don't have to spend their free time trying to figure this stuff out, although
You love this, Joe. Joe, you love it. Yes, yes. You was quoting math day, math facts like they were going out of style. You love this.
I, it is interesting. So yes, it definitely uh, uh, satisfies my curiosity. But anyway, um, yeah, and thanks to the uh, thanks to the steering committee for uh, for, for everything you guys did.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else? Seeing nobody, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the update of policy E B C F A face coverings as discussed at tonight's meeting.
Second.
A motion is seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, be a roll call vote. Joe?
No.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes, but I want to make sure it's only because I feel we have to, have to be in line with what the commission, what the state's mandate is.
Great. Here's the yes. Passes four to one. And that would conclude our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
A motion is seconded to adjourn. Joe?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chair's yes passes unanimously. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.